This hearing is now called to order. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore-Richards.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you.
Council will be at ease. I'm asking, any sidebar conversations, can you just please take it outside the chambers? The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore-Richards.
Okay. Can you hear me now, Press? Excellent. All right. Thank you all so much, and thank you to the administration for your testimony. I wanted to go back to EOP, okay? First, I'll start with the review of the Economic Opportunity Plan that you all have listed as Exhibit 2 to the SCA term sheet. I have some questions regarding the monitoring and compliance. That's in Section 8, beginning on page 16 of the exhibit, and then the remedies, Section 9, and reporting of Section 10. So, under the Monitoring and Compliance section, I don't see any specific requirements for frequency of reporting to the Oversight Committee and/or to council. It states that the developer or the operator agrees to cooperate with the committee and to submit information upon request. I think this language needs to be clearer on requiring certain information to be shared with the Oversight Committee as well as council on a regular basis. I wanted to mention that. Additionally, the section on the Oversight Committee only includes information on who will be on the committee, but it does not state how frequently the committee will meet or anything else about the operation or governance of the committee. Is there somewhere else in the agreement that provides that information about what we can expect around the committee and the committee's responsibilities? And then, will the committee's meetings be open to the public, or will they make all their information public? Or what's the frequency on how they'll also interact with council and/or the administration so that we also receive regular updates on the project? And I just want to go through my questions so I can get them all in. In the Remedies section, it states that the developer/operator will be required to comply with all penalties as laid out in Section 17-1600 of the Philadelphia Code, but for the process, it states the following, and I'm quoting. "No enforcement, action, remedy, or penalty shall be imposed or assessed until after the Oversight Committee has conducted an investigation. The developer/operator has been afforded a meaningful opportunity to be heard, and the city has otherwise complied with Chapter 17-600 of the Philadelphia Code and any other applicable due process requirements under the law." And so, I wanted to know how long, on average, does the process take? How often has the city enforced these penalties as it relates to EOP compliance? How will the city work with the committee and with council as a part of this process to ensure we are enforcing any penalties in a timely manner to try to get to some level of correction and/or improvement? And then, finally, and I'll try to get as much as I can in, Press, in the reporting section, I see that the requirements laid out for monthly updates during construction, quarterly updates during operations, and then an annual report. It states that all quarterly and annual reports must go to OEO, but I wanted to add in "and" city council. And I don't see the same requirement listed for monthly reporting, if you could tell me why. And then, how will monthly updates be used for real-time tracking, meaning not monthly updates, but real-time reporting updates? And how will the committee be able to really work with the developer/operator to achieve all the goals as opposed to just overseeing and then addressing everything on the backend? And I ask because, and I have a few more questions after that, and I'll wait until the next round. But I served on an EOP Oversight Committee for a project at St. Joseph's University when I was a former staffer for former councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown. And so, I have very intimate knowledge of this type of oversight and this process. And I do think that we don't have enough real-time tracking within the documents that I have been able to review thus far. So, if you all could just speak to that, and then I'll come back on the next round with some more granular questions relative to the EOP.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Nicole and I are going to tag team here and try to remember all of your questions. As far as reporting, so that is on my page 18, you're right that there are monthly reports during the construction period, but then on the ongoing period, right, where things are operating and stable, it does move to quarterly reports, and then there are annual reports. The matters that they have to report are included in that really long list of Good Faith and Good Faith Efforts, which is on pages 12 to 13. That lays out the documents that they are going to have to produce to the Oversight Committee, as well as the overall reports on the numbers, and I'll let Nicole pick up in a minute. As far as the Oversight Committee, you're right, there is not governance built in here. It is anticipated that the members will be chosen in calendar year 2025, and they will work to create their own governance structure. The Chair is chosen by the mayor, and there is someone from city council on there. So, I do not know how that person will report back to council. I kind of consider that your business.
I wanted to just be respectful of the clock, and I did hear the clock. Council President, may I just respond back? Okay, so, I think my concern is that we need regular reporting to council that even though we would have a member on the committee, that that information would go to the Council President for dissemination to all members of council.
Sure.
In addition to that, all the information that we should be receiving, or that the committee would receive, should also go to the Council President and would be disseminated to all members of council.
Okay. So, that's exactly what's going to happen. Absolutely. So, that is absolutely what is going to happen. It will go to Council President and Council President's office, and then that will be disseminated to council in real time.
Okay. And if you could just respond to, on the record, though, the frequency of the monitoring? Because you get into a situation where you're conducting monthly, let's say, on-site labor census, as an example, and after a month, you could be done with that particular mechanical trade or skill or whatever it is. I'm just, you know, being realistic about a project.
Yes.
And so, while you're reporting it, and we get the labor census numbers back, that particular trade could be finished at that point. And so, then you'll say, "Well, we tried. We tried to get somebody, but just couldn't do it. But we did report it, and we put it in a report." So, you know, we did our part there.
I just want to do a point of information, and I've done diversity and inclusion 50% on pretty much most of major development projects in my district, whether it's the Bellwether District, which is former Stoner Refinery, renovation, live casino. But I am talking to contractors and developers and the trades regarding the best faith, good effort approach, where you can say, "I tried to get these individuals, black and brown, to participate, and we can't find them," and then just move on. And so, that would be something we would want to work with you from an enforcement standpoint, to make sure we're holding people accountable. And then, also, the penalties. I would be remiss about it and mention, there was a company that I think we abolished from doing work, I think, where they were acting like they were a minority company.
Yes.
But it was a white women's front company, right? They were doing asphalt work, and they had it for generations and generations and generations, and just making sure we're on the forefront in terms of the penalties and the enforcement. So, I've actually abolished some folks from utilizing, usurping what we're trying to do the right way in this process.
Yeah. And that's a good point. So, just quickly, we hear you on best in good faith efforts, they could just say, "We tried," right? And there's no pipeline. But that's why we've been very specific as to the information that they have to submit, that everybody on the committee will be going through with a fine-tooth comb. You're designee, the mayor's designee, there's someone from Law Department, someone from This EOP is more specific than any other EOP we have seen. And I'll turn it to Nicole because I want to talk about the enforcement, which is just your question, your question, Councilmember, as well.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add in there, if you could speak to if there is a diversity strategic plan required for the operation of this facility.
Okay. I'm going to try and get to everyone's questions. Please let me know if I miss anything. As far as the reporting, just to double back, I want to make sure that it's clear, we do provide, they are required to provide a report to the committee, right? That has that makeup. And that report comes from an EOP monitor, which they are required to have by this plan. That EOP monitor has to be an independent party, meaning that they're not biased to the Sixers and they're not biased to us. And that's going to be the person that is reporting in real time, that's collecting information, that's giving these reports.
And what do you mean, real time? Can you clarify? What do you define as real time?
So, an EOP monitor by trade, from what I understand and from talking to industry experts, is supposed to be on the ground, and they're going to the actual sites. They're taking inventory of who is on the actual site, who is within the actual workforce. And I can take it as a takeaway to follow up with you guys, to see how often that the EOP monitor by trade. But I do know that they are someone that goes weekly, I believe.
Right. And not just that they're going out to every day, but that we're receiving the information and the data on an everyday basis so that we could proactively monitor what is happening?
Absolutely. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is empowering the tool of transparency. You know, we are not an administration that's going to say, "We tried." That doesn't work for us. And that is not indicative of Mayor Parker and the precedent that she set as the first woman and as an African-American woman in this role. "We tried, won't cut it." We know that from an economic mobility perspective, "We tried, won't cut it." So, we absolutely agree with you, Majority Leader Gilmore-Richards. There has to be ongoing enforcement so that, because there are things that are moving on a daily basis with regard to this project. So, absolutely, this is not going to be one of those, "We'll take it under advisement." Absolutely, that we have to empower the tool of transparency ongoing, on a regular basis, to ensure that reports don't come out after the job is done, and then it's too late. And then, we're reduced to "we tried." Absolutely, we agree with you.
I will come back on the second round to be respectful of the clock and also of my other colleagues who are seeking to ask questions. And I will also submit-
We did have another question around enforcement.
Right. And just let me put this on the record really quick-
Yes, ma'am.
-because we're limited on time. I will come back around. I will submit every question in writing for written response, so that we all have it in writing, because I know the quick nature of this process. But also, I want to be very clear that there are certain things that I know me personally, I'm going to speak for Catherine, that I must see in this term sheet as a part of this EOP process in order for me to be satisfied with anything around EOP and diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. That is mandatory. It is not something that we can get around or talk around in any way at this point in this process, particularly as a city of Philadelphia. So, I just want to put that on the record as it relates to the EOP portion of this. And then, I'm going to circle back on the next round of questions relative to the last point I had in the last round regarding the difference in the community benefits agreement and the charitable donations. I do not agree that this is the best deal. I don't agree. Because I was here, actually, as a very young intern when Wells Fargo, I'm sorry, when Citizens Bank and Lincoln Financial Field was negotiated. And we received from that deal a loan, just $60 million over the 30 years for the children's fund. $1 million per team, per year, for 30 years. Just that contribution was $60 million. That is not included here. And it does say this on page 18 of the comparison sheet, but it's not included. It's not included.
So, we will go over the economic impact when we come back to that. We would like to respond to the question around enforcement.
So, I know that that is a huge topic as it regards to EOPs, when it becomes enforcement. To your point, the city has recently debarred a contractor, and that decision, we just got back, still stands. And so, they were acting as a pass-through entity, and we did debar, and the court did affirm us. Will it go to appeal? Who knows? But for right now, our decision stands. And so, in this EOP, there are numerous penalties that are enforceable in conjunction with the Sixers. But I also would like to note for council, because I know that this is very important to you guys and important to us as well, that council, under 17-1600, they may by resolution adopt a public hearing to determine if there are reasonable grounds that a contractor has failed to comply, and withholding of payment would be appropriate remedy for such failure. They have that, and then they have also, they can also adopt by resolution, a public hearing that if failure is established, the contract termination, suspension, or debarment shall be the remedy for such failure. And so, in the event that, you know, you guys do want to call a hearing, that is an option that is available to you under 17-1600.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Council President. I will come back on the second round, and I will also ensure that I prepare the information regarding real-time data tracking to be included in the legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Kessie Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. We've heard a lot about the EOP, and in my meetings with different people, we've heard a lot about the EOP, and in my meetings with different people, I am concerned that there are two EOPs, right? There is an EOP that was negotiated by the administration, and there's an EOP that was negotiated by the African-American Chamber. And so, my question is, you know, is there actually two EOPs? And if so, which one will be prioritized, right? And how are we going to ensure that the EOP that is prioritized actually delivers on its goals, particularly reaching historically underrepresented communities? Because the EOP that was negotiated by the African-American Chamber is very specific to black-owned businesses, right? Or to opportunities for African-Americans. And so, you know, this is a diversity. There are many other cultures who are entrepreneurs and who deserve to be included in this equal opportunity for all situation.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to make sure that I'm very clear, there's only one Economic Opportunity Plan. There's only one. And that's the Economic Opportunity Plan that we introduced, that Nicole spoke to. So, I'll now turn it over to Nicole, but I want it to be very clear, there's not one and then another. There's only one Economic Opportunity Plan, and it's an Economic Opportunity Plan to benefit all.
So, before you respond, in my meetings, very specifically with the 76ers, they said, "Yes, we negotiated a 40% agreement of the day-to-day operations with the African-American Chamber to go specifically to black-owned businesses." When I met with the Chamber, they also confirmed, "Yes, we negotiated 40% of the operation day-to-day opportunities to go to specifically black-owned businesses." And so, you know, yes, they're 60%, but that 40% is not going to be able to carry that arena. And so, I am under the impression, and having talked to others, that that 60% will go to sponsors, sponsors that don't look like me, right? And so, representing a district where 55% of the people that live there look like me, I need to figure out, how do I get, how do I include people that look like me in that equal opportunity for all?
I want to be clear, there's not only one Economic Opportunity Plan, but we have engaged in diverse chambers. So, you mentioned the African-American Chambers, but there are other chambers that we've engaged around this plan, and we will continue to work with them to ensure that their interests, their members, what they're asking for, is represented here. And that accountability will not change. So, we've met with the Hispanic Chamber, we've met with the diverse chambers. So, just wanted to be very clear on that. But to the question around the Economic Opportunity Plan and whether there are multiple Economic Opportunities Plan, absolutely not. There's only one Economic Opportunity Plan. I'll kick it over to Nicole.
Can I, as a point of information, just for clarity, and Tiffany, this may be something we have to follow up with in regard to the Sixers in general, but there is an agreement between the Sixers and the African-American Chamber around concessions, the concession stand, the concession operators, right? There's like a training program, and particularly focusing on those who operate the concessions. And I think, and we've had this conversation, but we're going to put it all on the record as well, but the focus is particularly for African-Americans, the 40% commitment. And, you know, we have allies as well, black and brown allies, with Councilman Kessie Lozada and others who have an interest in making sure that they're included, Mike, don't laugh, they're included in making sure that they have a seat at the table regarding this particular process. And so far, that commitment is only between the Sixers and the Chamber. And I think that's where lies the rub, for clarity.
I would just be curious to see any agreement, because to me, I question the legality of having a specific target like that under Supreme Court jurisprudence. I have not had the ability to look at it or opine as to my perspective on that.
All right. Well, for the record, then maybe the Sixers, when they come in tomorrow, they'll talk about their partnership with the African-American Chamber specifically, as opposed to the whole collective diverse groups as a whole as well.
I just want to state that, for the administration, we're working with all the diverse chambers, including the African-American Chamber.
For the record. Good.
What I don't want is for us to say, "Well, the African-American Chamber is checking off all the boxes here to be able to deliver on that diversity commitment that we're making." And so, because we're relying on that agreement, you know, we're going to, we're not going to allow for those other ethnic groups to have that opportunity, right? I want to make sure that it is in black and white, that when we're talking about equal opportunity for all, that that equal opportunity looks as diverse as this city is.
And when we came here, right, because we know that there were negotiations and we're done long before we got here, but when we came here, what we said was, was that we're not going to be pulled into a fight. We're not going to be pulled into a fight between one chamber and the other, between one diverse group or the other. We want the whole pie. I've said that on the record before, when I was here earlier in the spring, talking about our budget. And that one Philly budget and this deal is the same thing. We want to make good on our promise, and that includes everyone. That includes all the diverse chambers. But we're not going to get pulled into a situation, as an administration, where we're pitting one chamber over the other. So, we've met with the Asian Chamber, we've met with all of the diverse chambers. But I'll kick it over now to Nicole to talk more about our Economic Opportunity Plan.
I appreciate that. I appreciate not getting pulled into a fight with the chambers, but you all have allowed a fight to be created. As a result, wait a minute, and it may not be the administration directly, but because the 76ers have continued on the conversation or have made this agreement with a specific chamber, there is now, you have now put the diverse chambers into a position where they are going to fight with each other, right? Or where they are going to have to try to advocate for the specific group that they represent, right? Which is why I'm saying, how do we get to a place where we're very clear about what agreement is the agreement we are going to abide by?
That's why we have walked through step by step the Economic Opportunity Plan, all aspects of the Economic Opportunity Plan with every chamber. We've empowered the tool of transparency. Our process is our process. We don't shrink back on our process. We don't do well in defense mode. What we make sure is that what we say we're going to do in terms of making good on our promise, that we will do that, and we'll continue to do that. We won't shrink back. I'll now kick it over to Nicole.
So, to Tiffany's point, I'm sorry, to the Chief of Staff's point, minority, as I was going over before, for Councilman Thomas, is included. And when it says it's African-American, it's Hispanic, it's the Caribbean Islands, Asian-American, Native American, Pacific Islanders, and so, all of that is clearly delineated and included in this plan. As a result, everyone should have opportunity, and I don't want this EOP to be painted as it's going to be an opportunity for some and not others. All of the minorities were specifically included in this plan, as far as local workers as well.
And may I, I have a little bit of an itch, so I want to say one more thing, that there are a lot of pipeline programs that are funded with the CBA and that we already have in Commerce and other departments, and they are not race-specific, right? The pipeline needs to be built for everybody. And to the extent that we are all making good on our progress with building that pipeline, it will create this pool. So, I just want to be clear with all of those, there will not be targeting towards a specific race in this city's economic opportunity for all in these programs.
I'd also like to note that, for example, we leaned on industry experts, and one of the examples that they gave us was that a lot of times, even with apprenticeship programs, they struggle with placement outside of the apprenticeship program just because there is no opportunity for those apprentices to develop, and so, they have a retention problem once apprentices matriculate from the programs. And so, this EOP, right, puts us in a position to create more opportunity for the apprentices that matriculate from those programs, because these are places in which there are requirements that diverse workers and businesses are included.
In reading your handout here, that $50 million in the CBA, can you tell me how that's going to be divided and who's going to manage that distribution?
I'll tell you who's going to manage, and it will be our friend over here, Mr. Duboe. It will be budget and finance, some combination, and so, it will be the city.
How is it going to be divided? How much is, who's getting that, and how much are the each entity getting?
Thank you, Councilmember Sophie Bryan. So, one of the exhibits that the councilmembers have is the CBA allocation listing and also a payment schedule. And you'll see in the allocation listing that we've divided it into two, I'm sorry, two different sections. One section for citywide investments and one section for investments that are responsive to Chinatown and adjacent communities. And we can run through the individual line items. What you'll see on each line is, what's a description of the purpose of the spending? So, for instance, $3 million to subsidize use of public transit, how much money in total, and then what the payment schedule is. So, I'm just going to make up the numbers here, because I don't have it, I'm not flipped to the right page, but $3 million, $1 million a year, starting in the year the arena opens. As the city solicitor said, the vast majority of those dollars are going to come to the city so we can ensure that they're put to the exact purpose that's specified in the CBA. A few of the dollars would go straight to the Sixers, so those are dollars for things like free tickets for public and charter school students to go to games, and also community use of the arena. So, I'm happy to go through, if you want to sort of go into some detail about what the items are. Let me just flip to that page. So, starting in the Chinatown and adjacent communities, the total amount there is $21.6 million, and these are just in order of dollar magnitude. So, we'll start with the biggest dollar and then work our way down. So, the largest investment in that category, and this is with Councilmember Squilla, is the new Arena Services District. It's a model that's sort of in place down at the South Philadelphia Sports Complex, and it is funded at $14.15 million, and it's spread out over 20 years. So, it's basically a sort of level funding amount, about $700,000 a year, starting in FY '26. Next, we've got the Housing Support, $3 million. The Director of Planning and Development, Jesse Lawrence, mentioned, at $3 million. The Business Disruption Fund, which we've had lots of conversation with, including with Councilmember Thomas, at $1.6 million. And just a couple more in that Chinatown section. The Neighborhood Security Substation, and then Council President Johnson had asked some questions about sort of security investments, that's $1.5 million. As Mike Carroll mentioned, particularly important on game and event days, it's a place to co-locate services and responses from PATCO, SEPTA, PPD, CCD, Jefferson, security staff. An expansion of the PHLTCB Cleaning Program, that's funded at $1.25 million. And then, investments in two master planning efforts, one for Chinatown and one for Market East. And the idea there, Councilmember, is to really bring in the voice of community and city planners in creating a broader vision for both Chinatown and for Market East as these significant developments take part. I'm going to flip now to the citywide investments, that's $28.4 million. The largest investment in that category, and it's spread out, I'm being a nimble here, over 14 years, is extended-day, extended-year schooling. And I think, Councilmember, this sort of- And I think, Councilmember, this sort of goes to the mayor's perspective on this project and the development of Market East as having citywide impact and the importance of preparing our young people, our folks who are not currently connected to employment or opportunity, our small businesses, to give the resources and supports and training so that we can, across the city, including in your district, leverage this opportunity. So there's a $7 million investment in extended day, extended year. There's 4.5 million for City College Municipal Employment. There really a focus on workforce development, preparing both workers and small businesses to leverage the opportunity created by the arena. We've got 3.75 million, and this is what Chief of Staff Thurman was mentioning, for the diverse chambers, to work with their constituencies, to prepare them to access the work both from the arena, but also from that broader development along Market East. We've got that $3 million for public transit, $3 million for free tickets for traditional public and charter school students. We've got $2 million Power Up Your Business, an existing program at Community College of Philadelphia. Here, a real focus from the mayor on making sure that those expanded offerings demonstrate cultural competency for the range of diverse constituencies that would access them and also are accessible to folks for whom English is not a first language. We've got 1.5 million to expand the Sixers Neighborhood Basketball League, looking over at Councilmember Thomas here. We've got $1 million for a Business Barriers Fund. And Councilmember, this was a real priority for the mayor. She's really sensitive to the fact that for some small businesses, having to get bonding, having to get insurance, having to have sort of audited financials can be a barrier to responding to contracting opportunities. So her idea here is, let's pool together some resources that are low barrier for our small businesses so they can get the credentials and sort of the credentials that they need to access contracting. Just a couple more to go. We've got $1 million for internships.
I don't need to interrupt. I sincerely apologize for the interruption, but we are now way past time for that round. And so I'm going to ask that you conclude.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then we will, Councilmember Lizada, ask that you come into the queue for round two. And we'll move on to the next member because we have a number of members in the queue, okay? And remember, we're supposed to have three minutes for this round, all right? Councilmember Lizada, are you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Are you good? Okay. The chair now has this Councilmember Ahmad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reiterate something that my colleague, Councilmember Nick O'Rourke, brought up. And this is really about a request for critical transaction documents relating to the proposed arena ordinance. A large-scale development project in a city is a significant opportunity to build the economic base of a city. It is especially important now as we are coming off the global pandemic, its long-term impact on Philadelphia's office market and the consequent economic headwinds facing that subsector. That is sure to result in depressed property valuation and create cities' budget challenges. But with such growth opportunities comes significant challenges as well. As a member of City Council, I remain committed to the economic well-being of our residents and I'm dedicated to bolstering the financial foundation of our city. I believe that as a legislative body, we have a responsibility and a duty to review all ordinances authorizing such large-scale developments carefully and perform due diligence to ensure that impacted communities' issues are duly considered. This includes Chinatown, the Gaborhood, the Washington Square West communities and other impacted areas. We must balance prospects of economic growth with the needs of the community that will face social and economic consequences and the fiscal impact, as well as the fiscal impact on city finances. The proposed arena ordinances must be analyzed with thorough scrutiny to safeguard Philadelphia's interests and therefore we must have a full understanding of the financial, legal, and operational terms of the ordinances. I had last week sent, requested some key documents from the mayor's office that are integral to Bill Number 240966, the basis of which is the passage of the ordinance that will deliver amongst its many benefits, quote, "the traction and retention of professional sports franchises," which, quote, "encourages, fosters, and stimulates such healthy, health safety, and general welfare and economic development, stability, and prosperity for the city of, for the people of the city," end quote. The primary document being requested was the Sublease and Development Agreement, SDA, which is together the arena lease. The SDA, the Sublease and Development Agreement, fall within the definition of contracts involving significant public interests. By omitting these documents from the package provided to City Councilmembers, the city is not fulfilling its obligation to present all relevant agreements to the council's review and approval. There are 297 references to the term arena lease in Bill Number 240966 with specific references to section and articles within which the full details of the provisions lie. The arena lease agreement is a complex financial arrangement. It creates long-term obligations and potential liabilities for the city which must be scrutinized by City Council before any such approval. And the city solicitor's response that this was not, this was a binding document, the term sheet that was provided was a binding document. Term sheets are by definition an outline of business terms that are negotiated between parties based on which legal contracts like a sublease is prepared. To represent that a sublease is the same as a term sheet is unacceptable. The term sheet does not legally bind parties, and that is why the term sheet for the SDA that was provided with the ordinance package as Exhibit B does not have the parties identified and not signatories either. It's merely basic terms and conditions of a potential business deal based on which the sublease is to be constructed, including required elements and sections. So, so lacking this specificity, we are in need of this. And here are the reasons why. The critical terms regarding financial safeguards, restriction on maximum debt amount, this is a financial stack we have not seen, requirements for minimum equity investments, performance obligations, and risk sharing measures can only be assessed with the complete and executed or advanced negotiated SDA. I know they're in work right now, but they can provide us some more detail and give us the negotiated SDA. Without the full SDA, it is impossible to determine the important safeguards and commercially reasonable provisions exist such as requirement for audited financial statements from the tenant, limitation in structure of capital stack, debt and equity minimums and maximums, and securing cities' approval before placing leasehold mortgage, termination provisions and cost recovery. Explicit mention of penalty clauses.
Colleen.
Yeah.
I apologize.
I'm wrapping up. And we can go on. I'm going to, this has already been submitted to the mayor. I'll submit it to Council President, this entire document, to say that we must get this information before we're able to see what our liabilities are going to be, not just now, but in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Ahmad. And I apologize for the interruption, but I want to make sure we get everybody in the queue. So if you all could take a moment to please just respond to that very quickly, and then we'll move on to Councilmember Squilla.
We received a request and we met with you. And I'll turn it over to our city solicitor on her response that you were affirmative about.
Thank you, Councilmember. As I stated before, the SDA is not in final form until the term sheet is finalized. And I disagree with you that the term sheet is not binding. It is actually what will be voted on by City Council and will be binding on both parties. And actually, there cannot legally be any mismatch between the term sheet and the SDA. Further, I got your letter and I will respond accordingly. But I'm happy for any council member to brief you conceptually as to any of the questions or concerns that you have, which I think will be more fruitful given the very technical nature of the sublease. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Because while you have summation in the term, you know, term sheet, we need to look at the underlying stack and that's, and if you're able to provide that, wonderful. That's, that's all we're asking, that's all I'm asking, to be able to see how fiscally sound and what are we on the hook for, not just now, but 30 years later. So that's really what I want, want to get at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Ahmad. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Squilla.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I know a lot of people have a lot more questions, but we, as we talk about enforcement, and I know, Renee, you had mentioned that the Solicitor's Office will oversee enforcement of the, of the CBA and, and the legislation. If, if there is violations in anything to do with the CBA or legislation, how, how would that be enforced and what would be the remedies to make sure that they are adhering to what is agreed on?
Sure. Violations of the CBA or the EOP or any of these other documents are a violation of the sublease, right? And the sublease has a ton of remedies for, and it could be specific performance, it could be injunction, it could be damages. But for the CBA specifically, I can file a direct breach of contract action, which will be much quicker. I can get into very, to court very quickly and file that. It's a, it's a pretty simple lawsuit, so that's, that's likely the way I will go. But, but all of these documents tie together and a violation of any of them is a violation of the sublease.
So, so then, but there would have to be legal action taken by the city at that point for that violation. It wouldn't be left to anybody else to file a CBA violation or a violation against the legislation?
It would be in the Solicitor's Office, yes.
Okay. All right. And the, the last, another question I had quickly on how we, as a city, look at these CBA, and I guess Tiffany, for you, and I know we have, we heard questions from members throughout. Obviously, there's concerns, and this is what the legislative process is for, to make sure that all council members are heard during this process. What would be the, if, if council came to a conclusion that they needed additional dollars, say, in the Business Interruption Fund or additional dollars, is that something we could work with, with the administration and with the 76ers in order to make that happen as part of this agreement?
We've worked with, with you, in fact, right, on, on the Arena Services District. So I think through our actions from the time that we got here, when we, to when we came out and said that we reached a deal, to even now with, with regards to the CBA and the changes that we've made to reflect a $14.1 million investment in Arena Services District, we want to ensure that this, that we make good on our promise, but that we maximize the limited funds that we have. So the 50 million, that's another reason why we, we fought for ensuring that most of the funds were front-loaded. So, so there's always, you know, we, we will continue to work with you, with council.
And, and last question, as far as the lease, the lease starts when? I believe it's when they give the arena to the city, is that correct? And then, and then after that point, we'll explain if, when does the arena go dark and how can we make sure that the CBA, if there is a renewal of the lease, there would be a renewal of the CBA or negotiates as part of the CBA?
After the first 30 years, we'd have to renegotiate the CBA.
When, when's it start? When does, when does the lease start?
When does the, the sublease start? Yeah, before demolition. I mean, we're going to sign it.
So is that 30 years? So if it's in 2026 or 2027, so that 30 years would start from then, they wouldn't be playing for that time?
I'm sorry if I'm not getting your question. Maybe Sam can answer the question better.
The 30, Sam Rhodes with PIDC, the 30 years would start in 2031 when the Sixers are anticipated to start playing. So the base term would be from 2031 to 2061. The lease would be expected to be signed if and when.
Pardon me, we cannot hear you. Please state your name again for the record.
I apologize.
And proceed with your testimony. We have to ensure the stenographer is able to get this for the record.
I apologize. Sam Rhodes with PIDC. The base lease term during which the Sixers would be playing their games would be 30 years, starting in 2031, so running through 2061.
Hold on one moment. Pardon me. They're not able to hear you.
Okay. All right. How, how are we doing now?
Now we're cooking with gas.
All right. I'm still Sam Rhodes and I'm with PIDC. And so the lease has a couple of different elements to it. The base term or the, the term during which the Sixers would be playing is 30 years. It's anticipated to start in 2031 with that basketball season and so therefore run through 2061. We would expect that the sublease would be signed if and when this body approves the transaction and commence, before they commence the demolition and construction periods. So that would be on top of the 30 years. So it's demolition plus construction plus 30 years.
All right. And then if renew all the lease, if they do want to extend it, at that point, is there any language within the lease to make sure we have to go back to a CBA to look at additional funding because there is nothing past the original 30 years?
That's correct.
Councilmember. And, and did I understand your question? Were you asking about the concurrence of the lease and the CBA? So the, the CBA starts before the lease, is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Yes.
The CBA starts before the lease, so we have to make sure that if we're looking at do this through the length of the lease, we have to make sure that the resources are there through those 30 years through 61. So we might have to rework some of those numbers also.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Squilla. Before I go on to Councilmember Landau, I just wanted to stop there with a question that Councilmember Squilla posed relative to when the 30-year agreement would begin, which would be 2031. So the initial period would be 2031 to 2061 with the opportunity for 13 five-year renewals, is that correct? How many renewals is it and what's the, the term period? Is it 13 five-year renewals? I don't have my papers right in front of me, but I remember reading that.
Yeah, I think that's right. The whole thing, I think, goes 99 years.
Right. So for clarification, though, once the time would come to renegotiate for the term, what is the notice period? So there's a clause inside of that, the contract documents, that talks about the notice that the developer slash operator would need to give to the city relative to the amount of time they would have to get back to us.
Get back to us with respect to.
Whether they're renewing the lease or not.
Renewing the lease.
Right.
Right. So the, the terms of the lease would stay in place through the base term and then, and then through the extensions.
It's inside the documents. I don't have my papers here at the chair's desk, but I believe it says 10 days. I remember reading that. Section 3.3. Could you just clarify that? It's the tab that says 10 years on the bottom. 10 days. So it's Bill Number 240966, page 24, it's Article, Article 3, Section 3.3 Renewal Terms. And so it states, renewal terms subject to the rights of the city and the authority under the article of this lease following the last day of the secondary term. The term shall automatically extend for 13 consecutive terms of five years each, followed by one term of three years, each a renewal term, unless the authority notifies the city in writing no later than 10 days prior to the expiration of the secondary term or the then-current renewal term that tenant has notified the authority that tenant has elected to not renew the term. So I wanted to, if you all could just talk and speak to that because that was, I think, part of what the council member's question was, relative to only a 10-day notice if they would not renew the lease. I remember reading that in that bill. If you could speak to that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We're just, this is in the ground lease between the city and paid, right? Which is different than the lease between paid and the Sixers. Yes.
Right. So, but if you could speak to the 10-day notice, I think, Councilmember Squilla, I don't want to over-clarify what you were asking.
Two things. One was, there is two separate leases because of the ground lease, right? And there's a go-dark provision for that also, right? That if there's so That if there's so many events not happening at that arena, that would consider it go-dark, and then that's when the arena would, I believe, go back to the owners of it. So we're not left with a dilapidated property. They would then have to maintain it, and that lease would then end. But there's two, there's two forms. One is the ground lease, and one is the lease between Sixers and paid. And then at that point, do they automatically get to renew that? And if they don't notify us within 10 days, it's automatically renewed? So if it's automatically renewed, how's there an opportunity to re-up a CBA? Or how's there an opportunity to say, all right, what are we going to do moving forward with the arena?
Yeah, that's correct. The CBA is for this base term. It does not continue through into the extension terms.
Right, but we wanted to, so we would have to change that, correct?
That would be correct. It does not currently accommodate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you so much, Councilmember Squilla. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Landau.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, and thanks for answering our questions. What we've been hearing in the questions and answers is that there's still many unanswered questions about some potential costs. Things like SEPTA, who desperately wants, needs some investment, and there's a question about who's going to do it. I think all eyes are towards the Sixers. They should pay for it, right? There's also been other questions that have come up where we're leaving it a question mark as to who's paying for it, how we would get additional money. Councilmember Thomas brought up the, just the 1.6 million in businesses, that that is, that's not adequate. When will we know the final, when will we have a full picture of costs? And when will you come back to us to ask us about these costs? That's the first question. And I say this to also echo, we have very uncertain times we're walking into now. As somebody who worked for the City of Philadelphia during the previous Trump presidency, I remember about facing much of the work that we were doing and/or adding new resources to it. We have a lot of question marks about what's going to happen to us going forward and what funding streams will stop or not. And I then feel very uneasy about the amount of question marks we have here about who's paying for what and what the full picture of the real cost of this is. And then, I want to follow, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to stick with the CBA, I think, at this moment, to ask some questions about assumptions that were made about the housing investment. That there's a $3 million that's supposed to be seed funding to be leveraged by other funding to create more affordable housing. Why the number 3 million? What are the assumptions that were made? To me, it seems very low. It also is creating housing up to 120% of AMI, which is about $123,000 for a family of three, which is awfully high. Do you have any idea what the average month, the average annual income is of someone in the surrounding area, especially Chinatown, as to whether or not they would be able to afford this housing that we're discussing? And cannot underscore enough how much, I don't think that is enough money at all for housing. And then I'll just pepper one or two more while we're in here. I have a lot of concerns also about neighborhood gentrification that will force homeowners and individuals out, but also a lot of the necessary services and nonprofits that we have in center city. There are recovery places. There are nonprofits that support the LGBTQ community. There are nonprofits that are supporting victims of domestic violence. What happens if the arena causes gentrification that pushes our nonprofits out? What can we do? Are there any protections for them baked in here?
I can, the first question, there are a series of questions in there, but the first one was a concern around the ambiguity of costs. And I want to be clear, and the term sheet that's attached to the ordinance, the Sixers are 100% responsible for this project.
But what about the things that we don't have an answer for yet? The SEPTA's saying it's going to cost $20 million easily, initial investment, to subsidize what they need to do for the ridership, and everyone's saying, we don't know yet who's paying for it. We understand they're still in conversation. It's very concerning we're being asked to do something now when there's still so many question marks about who's paying for what in the future.
This, as part of the Sixers' responsibility, they'll be responsible for all impacts that they have to the SEPTA station. Improvements and things like that over and above that would be SEPTA's.
SEPTA doesn't, let's be honest, SEPTA doesn't have the money for this, so someone has to pay for it.
So we'll answer your questions around housing affordability, Councilmember, and neighborhood gentrification and pushing out nonprofits, so.
Hi, Councilmember. Just to be clear, so the master planning effort dedicated to Chinatown, I'm sorry, Jesse Lawrence, Director of Planning and Development, the 3 million that has been called out, again, it is supposed to be seed funding. So we understand that that number doesn't necessarily do the impact that, you know, would solve the housing issue, which is why it's supposed to be part of a larger program that will more comprehensively define where the funding for housing would go. We are tying ourselves to a Chinatown commitment coming out of that housing plan, making sure that our master plan looks at comprehensively, not just housing, but how quality of life is to be maintained, making sure that we are eliminating barriers to maintaining such, making sure that we are minimizing any drivers of gentrification, anything that goes against maintaining the heritage and the cultural aspect there. In terms of, I'm sorry, your other question was?
It's about the nonprofits and the nonprofit organizations in the neighborhood that are necessary.
Yeah, well, again, that is part of the grander plan, which is making sure that we are having this master planning effort to make sure that the stakeholders who are part of that process are at the table to guide us, to make sure we understand what the issues may be, what they need to sustain themselves. Again, we're looking at different funding mechanisms in addition to this, and that's why they are important to be part of that conversation, to make sure that, you know, they can guide us to attach to the things that we need to sustain.
I just, I have to pop in again, just to say, we based all of this around certain assumptions that I think will change as of January 20th. We are basing thoughts of funding streams and how you leverage $3 million based on a past model, that's going to change dramatically. And I'm really worried about the fact that we have two pots of $500,000 each, half a million dollars each, one that's going into Market East Master Plan, and one that's going into a Chinatown Master Plan. But that should have been done a long time ago. How can we back end that? We're supposed to, again, approve, approve plan and go forward, but why does the approval come before the plan? And the plan is based on something we don't even know yet, because things are about to get pretty bad.
I think I could add a couple of things. First, the impacts from this won't happen till at least 2026. And again, our belief is that there's going to be minimal shutdowns. And again, there will be impacts, for sure, but we don't think they're going to be anything as extensive. People keep mentioning Market Street, where the whole street was shut down. So these are going to be minimal. The roads won't be closed, except for rare exception, when they need to deliver a crane or something. By and large, you're going to be able to get through. So there's not going to be dramatic impacts, but we, again, and we've talked about some, a fund to be able to help offset any problems that do occur. But we need to, we're already starting to think through how we're going to do a plan. I don't know that the million dollars is going to be enough. I think that we will be able to look to other partners to help fund stuff. We have money that we do plans, that we might be able to use internally. There's also plans happening right now. The Stitch is fully funded, at like $163 million, and part of that is a plan. And so the work that's getting done for that will be used, but it's already going to be done, and it's already going to be paid for by some other source. And of course, all the work that the community has already done and anything we've done, the first step is to always gather up all the known information. And so that has to be part of it, to make it as robust as possible, to address things that we're all talking about here, like traffic, affordable housing. Are there affordable housing projects coming off affordability that we can stabilize? What properties does the city own? What properties does government in general own that we can maybe look towards an eye towards making available? So that would be an added contribution. That's not part of any of the numbers we're talking about. We also, it's interesting, we have a dichotomy here. We have Chinatown worrying about gentrification, both in the cost of housing, but also the affordability of commercial spaces.
Yes.
And yet, on Market Street, we have a dearth of available space. It's unbelievable. Everybody probably heard, the Giant is closing at the end of the year. Jesse has a thorough analysis of every retail space. So there, between trying to think thoughtfully about how we can protect Chinatown from gentrification, but also make it easy for that fear of business that's coming in and going to take over, to guide them towards Market East, where we have endless space, unlimited transportation, and I think that if you do it smartly, you can steer some of that, and you can try to minimize the impacts. Can we guarantee there's never going to be a negative impact? Of course not. But I think by doing as much planning, as much thoughtful exercise, as much engagement, making sure we collect all the ideas, we collect all the problems, all the concerns, and if we're thoughtful and deliberate about it, I think we can make significant impact in making sure that there, that the impacts aren't as significant as people worry.
Can I ask one last legal question, just to tie this CBA part up? But for the record, I do not think 50 million's enough. Yes, thank you, Renee. I know that you added to this agreement the ability that the entity that would enforce the CBA or the EOP is solely the city, the city Solicitor's Office, to take the burden off of RCOs or community organizations from actually suing. But I can imagine a scenario when, you know, we fully trust you and know you're all in and whatever, but you're not here, where we might want a community organization to have the authority to also file the lawsuit if the city doesn't do it. So I'd appreciate an or clause being put in there, that the city could do it, and then some version or the community group to give the community the enforcement teeth that it needs, just in case the city doesn't do it for them.
And I understand that sentiment, I do, but it is solely in my shop to do it, because it would be unmanageable if all of a sudden all these nonprofits started suing and I lost control over that. And it could be that the Sixers gave money to the city, and then the city hasn't paid out, because maybe there's a tax hold with that nonprofit, right? It gets very uncontrollable very quickly, and I do think that this is, from what we have seen, I do think that this is the best way, because if a nonprofit tries to sue, they will be bled. I mean, they're up against a behemoth, and I do think the Solicitor's Office carries the authority, and that is, I sincerely believe that's the best way to go.
Thank you. I just had a SEPTA question, just, and Sam, could you sit there for a second as I go through this process? When we built the stadiums, Lincoln Financial Field, as well as Wells Fargo Center, when they were built during that period, did the teams pay for the increase in ridership that came as a result of them building the stadiums?
No, they did not. The teams had no responsibility for that.
Asking, why not?
Why not?
During that time? You said the teams paid for the increase in ridership?
Well, no, the teams did not.
They did not?
No, they did not. No, no, no.
So why are we, so what's the difference between then and now? Is it because it's going downtown, there's going to be an increase in ridership versus in South Philadelphia? Just trying to...
In neither, in either in this case nor in that case, are the teams being asked to cover...
So is the requirement increase in ridership for, is the, is the requirement for the Sixers to pay for increase in ridership, as well as the infrastructure of the subway station? Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gardier for a point of information.
Point of information, Council President. It's not just that SEPTA would have to increase service or experience operational costs. I think we're on this topic of conversation, because the Sixers themselves have noted that their traffic plans don't work without 40% ridership. SEPTA has been very clear that that will not exist with one to two-hour service at Jefferson Station. So this is not a result of an unfair burden being placed on the Sixers. This is the Sixers' own plan, and that it hinges upon these investments at Jefferson Station.
Is that clarified?
Yeah, so the way that Councilmember, Councilmember Gardier laid it out, is sort of the sequence that creates this situation. Go back to your original question, what makes South Philly different? It is a fact that that's the end of a line, which makes it easier to service, because all the trains are going to end up at the end of the line anyway. You can store trains at the end of the line and then wait for the events to let out, and then use those trains to get them out. You can store trains along the Broad Street Line. So operationally, it's easier to manage that. The fact is that the way the Broad Street Line runs, the capacity of the trains, the frequency of the trains, it's a more straightforward proposition. But it's still SEPTA's responsibility to work that out in both cases. And so the situation here is that SEPTA is telling everyone, and we're still waiting for more detail, but they're telling everyone what they need to do operationally to provide the capacity as events would let out at Jefferson Station. And what they're also telling people at the same time is that currently, that's not something that we have the resources for. So the question is, where do those resources come from? And I think the thing we're trying to be firm on, and just not to repeat to death, but we, as a city, have done our part to answer that question. We have put forward resources in the 2025 budget. We put forward additional resources in what we're proposing in the CBA to answer that question. And I just want to be clear, we don't want to get cornered, as a city, in a conversation that we are a party to, but we're not directly involved in, in committing more city resources to answer that question. So we do need that discussion to evolve and develop and continue, and we are monitoring that. We're a part of making sure that, you know, the information is shared.
So your summary is, it's not on us, it's on the Sixers to figure it out? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you for that insightful question, Mr. President. Simply put, to give you an answer, there's a big difference between going north and south and east and west. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jones, drop that mic over there. Mark, I think we are in South Philly, though, right? All right. So, and what's the dollar amount as well? Have any, have they expressed, what is it, 20 million, 30 million?
So, so we have seen with respect to day-to-day operations during events, a number that ranges around 20 million, but we haven't seen the detail as to how that's been developed.
Okay.
From SEPTA.
Just wanted to add for clarity and recognize the difference between the requirements from in the past, the requirements now, so very well explained. The Chair recognizes Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just from my colleagues, right, just for some information. We're concerned about transportation, we're concerned about SEPTA. If we pass this legislation before SEPTA and the Sixers enter to an agreement, SEPTA will lose all its leverage in any kind of negotiations, any type of deals. So let's keep that in mind as we move forward, right? So with that, you know, although, you know, some, it's been touted that, you know, this is the best deal, things like that, but I just want to, you know, let folks know who are in this chamber, who are watching, who are listening, all the stakeholders, to let them know. In the history of arena or stadium deals, there has never, never, ever, ever, ever been the economic benefits reached that has been stated. Let me repeat that. There has never been the economic benefits that were stated, attained by the cities that say that these are going to reap these benefits in the history. In fact, no arena has even come close to a return on investment, and I think that the administration's own consultants would agree with me, because they did, right, when I made that point. So let's put that on the table. Like, that's the premise of, I guess, my apprehension about this particular deal, right? Regarding the CBA, right? Regarding the CBA, right, did the administration attempt to negotiate a higher number other than the $50 million?
Could talk about the economic impact of the CBA?
I'll talk about the economic impact for a minute, because we share your concern about the economic benefits of arenas and how they compare to studies. So we were very careful with our outside consultants to say that we wanted this to be a different type of study. We wanted them only to look at new events in the arena. We wanted them to only look at spending in the arena, so none of the kind of indirect or induced multipliers you usually see in those kinds of studies. And we also wanted them to do a sensitivity analysis, which they did. So, you know, in their analysis, they're pretty confident based on their research, what's happened in other places with two facilities or multiple facilities or other cities around our size, that we'll get 53 new events. But their sensitivity analysis showed that even if we got SU as 18 new events, there's a positive impact. And in part, that's because we're not putting any money in. So, you know, whatever new events we get...
Positive, I get that, right? There's a positive impact, but that's all relative, right? Because I don't think that the city has done any examination of what other uses this particular site could have that will also reap positive impacts, right? So I think that's all relative, because you've only been focused on building or developing an arena at this location and not developing anything else at this particular site.
Yeah, so what our consultants did was also looked at, kind of what you're talking about, the displacement effect of having that arena there, like where else would that money have been spent? So they did account for that in their analysis to get to the positive numbers that they're showing.
And with, again, so again, can you answer, I guess I asked the second question, is did the administration attempt to negotiate a number higher than the $50 million CBA?
When we got here, on day one, January 1, $50 million was negotiated in the CBA. And what we wanted to ensure is that we stretched that $50 million as far and as wide and as strategic with upfront dollars more than what we've seen in other past deals from a historic perspective, that these gentlemen, flank to my left and my right, could say, based on other deals that happened. So of the $50 million, this is the allocation that we came up with.
But given that this is a new administration and given the autonomy, right, of a new administration, why wasn't a higher number negotiated? Like, why did you stick to that $50 million?
So we looked at not just the $50 million within the CBA, because, again, this is more broader than just the CBA. CBA is important, the $50 million is important. But we also looked at the economic impact study. We looked at the pilot UNO tax. We looked at this deal comprehensively, and that goes to that SAM chart that Sam Rhodes developed that was referenced earlier today. So we'll go down to the SAM chart and talk about that.
So comprehensively, I don't think, again...
The deal more comprehensively.
Looking at the deal comprehensively and the future outbreaks and things like that, future outcomes, I still don't think that this deal... I'm gonna tell you what I think this deal is worth, right? From talking to other experts in the field, in the industry, I'm just giving you an example of what happened in the early 2000s in Los Angeles, right? Los Angeles developed an airport, they had a robust CBA. The value of a CBA for that airport was half a billion dollars. That's the value of their CBA. Looking at this deal, this deal is worth $300 million to the city. We are getting one-sixth of the value in the CBA. And that's because, again, there had been no arena deal in the history to prove those benefits that they said. So we want to get the money upfront. Great, y'all negotiated, spend the money upfront. Great, right? But that money upfront is not, is only still one-sixth of the value of this deal when you look at everything in totality. So I guess another question that I have is, you know, I'm just, I just can't understand why, why was the 50, this administration has set to do things on their own terms and do things their own way. But when it comes to this deal in this arena, you're set on something that was passed on from the previous generation, right? Previous administration, rather. And so for me, I'm just trying to figure out, what did you negotiate in this deal that wasn't negotiated in a prior administration?
So in addition to the allocation of all of the caveats that Sophie Bryant mentioned earlier with regards to the $50 million, in addition to that, we also, through the third-party independent verifier, we looked at, the consultant that we settled on, we worked with, we looked at 19 other different plans. So we don't just tout that we have, or we landed on the best deal possible. That's based on data and science that we made transparent in the report that we shared publicly on the record that was televised at the convention center.
Mr. President, I add that those deals that they have been researched and touted, there were bad deals as well, right? So we want to keep touting bad deals, right? I mean, they're bad deals. I mean, I agree that, I would say that the arenas that we have now currently, they were bad deals when I studied them, right? So it's just that we can't keep touting a bad deal, right? I understand, but the best deal that you probably could negotiate, right? The best deal you could negotiate, I understand completely. But it's still a bad deal for the city, it's still a bad deal for the overall economic viability of our city long-term, it's a bad deal for those local communities, and I just need to see more in it, right? If we're going to, we're giving this away. We are, I talked to some folks, we are giving them this arena deal for one-sixth of the value of what this could be. And I really think that we're, we're talking about jobs, we're talking about schools, right? We're talking about rec centers. I have rec centers in my community that need roofs, that have HVAC problems, need brand-new electrical systems. Why should kids in North Philly not be able to play in a new space, but the Sixers get to play in a new space? Why do they keep gotta go into these crappy schools with asbestos and things like that, right? Why is that? But the Sixers get a new space? Why is that? We need to, and given the economic outcome with this new president that's coming in, we have to stick to what we can do to, and use our leverage as a city to get the most bang for our buck here. And this $50 million ain't it at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Whether it's, whether we're talking about rec centers, right? Rec centers. Now, when you talk about rec centers and slides and swings, that's my language, as the former Chief of Staff of Philadelphia Parks and Recreation. I know this department through and through. I know our assets and our infrastructure through and through. I know where the needs are. And that's why I'm honored to serve in this role as Chief of Staff, serving alongside of Mayor Parker, to look at all of our assets, all of our infrastructure. We're looking at the citywide impact that this can make. That's why we're framing this as beyond the basketball. We're looking at how we can get the best bang for our buck with the limited resources that we have. To that end, from an economic impact perspective, I'd like to turn it over to Sam Rhodes to talk about the economic impact analysis that we conducted under our administration after we got here and why we're saying it, and why we've been able to prove that this is the best deal.
Yeah, a couple things. I mean, one of the most important things to keep...
I also just want to say this. Since we got here, even before we reached a deal, even before we came out and said what our position was, the same people that have said that this was a bad deal, they were saying it then before we even came to a deal, and they're saying it now. So I, so what I want to make sure is, I want to make sure that we get on the record the analysis, the methodology, while we didn't rush to make a deal in January, while we didn't rush to make a deal in the springtime or even the summertime, we were strategic in our approach. That's what I'm asking Sam Rhodes to talk about.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this $50 million CBA, right, that has been thrown out for the past two years. It's the same deal. So that's what I'm getting at, right? This is the exact same deal that was put forward during the Kenny administration. So again, it's like, so you've done this impact, this economic analysis, and we appreciate that, but it gets us back to the same, the same thing that we've been talking about for the past two, before I was on council, right? I was just on the outside looking in, but it's the same terms. It's the same terms. I'm trying to figure out, what were you able to negotiate? What's new that you were able to negotiate that the previous administration could not?
We'll go to the tax revenues first, and then we'll take it over from an economic impact analysis, and we'll take it over to Sam Rhodes.
Yeah, so what our independent analysis from CSL, the firm we hired, showed was that this is worth $700 million in local taxes between the city and the school district, and another $350 million for the Commonwealth. So that's what we're getting out of the deal. Without any city money going in, we get tax dollars. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sam to talk some more. Yeah, so I want to underscore that in this transaction, the Sixers are acquiring the land with their funds. They're donating it into the City of Philadelphia and then releasing it back out to them. So the city, as the Sixers propose this transaction, there is no city investment in it, and so therefore, all of the net new revenues are indeed net new revenues. The $50 million CBA comes on top of that. So not only are they not asking us to invest dollars, but they're also offering to put the $50 million on top of that. That is unusual across the entire country. So in order to compare apples to apples, you would have to look at transactions that were privately financed without city funds, and then further look at their CBA. With respect to the tax revenue projections, as Mr. Dubois indicated, the City of Philadelphia, and I can't speak to other cities, but the City of Philadelphia has always and has continued to take an incredibly conservative analysis of these revenues. We are looking only at net new events. These are events that would not happen in a single arena scenario. So these are net new to the City of Philadelphia. We are only looking at revenues that come from within the arena. We did not look, and I'm just repeating what Mr. Dubois said, we're not looking at induced impact, we're not looking at indirect impact, we are not looking at multiplier effects, we are looking at actual experience with wages and sales revenues at comparable facilities. That is not what the industry standard is. That is much more conservative. So we, with all of those guidelines, our consultant went through each individual tax, the pilot payment, the wage taxes from these net new events, the city's 2% portion of the sales tax, the beverage tax, the amusement tax. The only tax that we looked at outside of the arena is parking taxes, and again, that was only with respect to the net new events. Burt, use and occupancy for the school, as well as liquor for the school. And as we indicated, those numbers, based on those conservative assumptions, just based on net new, adds up to $700 million.
And saying that, right, so that adds up to $700 million. But again, what makes this deal better than any other arena deal in the history of arena deals to show that we're going to net that money? Like, nothing in this, nothing from what I've seen so far guarantees me that we're going to get this money, right? When no other deal has ever come close to getting any of the tax benefits that they say they're going to get. What in this deal is, like, you know what? This is, this is it. This is this term, this is this clause, this is the thing right here that's gonna make us reap, the $700 million.
So what's different for us is there's no local money in the deal. So that's different from any other stadium...
There's no local money for now, because there's a clause in there that says that...
There's no local money in the agreement that we reach with the Sixers. There's no local money in the agreement that we reach with the Sixers. That's never happened before with an arena deal here. And in terms of the $700 million, we agree with you, maybe it won't be 700 million. That's why we asked for sensitivity analysis. Even if instead of 53 new events, we got 18, there's still a dramatic positive impact. So yes, there's no guarantee, and that's exactly why we wanted to see what it would look like if there were fewer events.
Right. Because there's no guarantee, that is my concern with the $50 million. That's why there needs to be more, because there is no guarantee that the city is going to get those benefits 30, 40, 50 years from now. That's why we, that's why we need more.
There's a guarantee that we will get benefits, and it's with no city dollars going in.
There's no city dollars for now, because there's a clause in there that says if any other competing entity gets public money, then we owe the Sixers money. So there's no public money in it for now.
There is no public money in the agreement. That's right. That's where we are.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilman Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to wrap up my comments that I was making earlier. I know there's time issues, but I just wanted to reiterate, the ground lease lays out the core foundation of why we as a city would justify accommodations, use, offer favorable tax tools in exchange for significant potential economic gains. This, it includes language that says, "states improves public use." These languages that help justify why we would not charge the real estate by formula as we do all other investments. Charge UNO taxes based on established formula for occupancy and rate. Thus, pilots and UNO tax settlement agreements are set at a negotiated amount, usually much lower than what would be by application of criteria and formula that you and I would be subject to. It is done clearly on the promise, and I would say, subject to our due diligence, that those projected economic benefits stand. As in any business transaction, when we trade lower or cap taxes for potential economic benefits, then we need to have some offsetting formula to stave off or clawback, let me repeat that, clawback, some of those giveaways so that we as a committee have a fair deal. So I just, that's the reason for wanting the details, and I just wanted to underscore that for everybody's benefit. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. You got great timing, man. I don't know if it's your energy or your ability to do this. I want to, I want to take some of the energy from Councilmember Young and see if I could help out a little bit with some of this stuff, right? So, in the deal, it says $3 million for public schools to go to games. Is the administration open to removing that component? Let me say why. On a Tuesday night against the Washington Wizards, excuse of all of my Washington DC elected officials, folks ain't going to that game, right?
Time, 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 time. Isn't like the MVP like on load management or something?
Say it again?
Isn't the MVP like on...
Yeah, I was gonna ask the Sixers tomorrow about that, but you know, that's another conversation. Right, so, we, on a typical Wednesday night, the Sixers are gonna give those tickets away anyway. That's gonna happen. So, and all of those people that were here earlier, some of them are still here, some of them not, they can tell you that a lot of their organizations, we had a lot of black men up there, Councilman Phillips, 18 to 25-year-old young black men, those young black men who are up there, they could tell you firsthand, they get those free tickets already. So I'm looking at the $3 million for free tickets. I know this is gonna sound a little hypocritical, but the $1.5 million for basketball development, the Sixers put up $6 million maybe for just the six-man center alone over a one-year time period. So what does it look like for the admin to be open to working with council members, to renegotiate some of the things that's in the $50 million current proposal, but then also, as I asked you earlier about the $1.6 million for business development, you told me that you're confident that you will be able to work with private sector partners and other folks to be able to generate more revenue if my hypothesis is correct. You have a plan for that. So I think, based on listening to some of the information around Septa, looking at some of the things that's in here that may be well-intended, but dollars can be diverted elsewhere, is there any appetite from the admin to renegotiate some of these things, to put us in a position to be able to find something that is a little more beneficial to the City of Philadelphia than what we have in place right now?
We stand by the CBA that we introduced, upright, but we also have had robust conversations with members of council, with also community members, as well as local civic associations. To that end, the outcome or outgrowth of that is the $14.1 million to the Arena Services District. You know, one of the things that our mayor always says is, "Don't go by what I say, watch what I do." I think if we look at what we introduced at the convention center versus what we have here now, what we rolled out at the convention center versus what we have here now, that's the outgrowth of ongoing conversations even with council member Scola. So, "Don't go by what we say, watch what we do," right? We want to make sure that whether it's the CBA, the EOP, going to some of the points that were made earlier by Majority Leader Kathy Gilmore-Richardson, that it's reflect, it's the best deal. It's the best deal.
So I'm gonna go on the record...
And let me say, I can't speak to the specific games that you were talking about, nor can I dribble a basketball. But what I can say is, is that we want to make sure that we're making good and that we're not just throwing, you know, just random things to our, the children that matter most important to us, not just in the public schools, but in the charter schools as well, as is written here in the CBA.
So I heard the buzzer. So as I close out, and I'm not gonna come back for a second round, because I'm gonna be open to negotiations and dialogue, as I close out, notice, I didn't say anything about the City College for Municipal Employment, right? I didn't touch that, because we understand that that's a pet project of the mayor, and... I don't know a person who came into this hearing today, maybe two or three, who's like, "This is a great deal for me." I think that you have to take the position of, there are some of us who are open to a conversation, there are some of us who already made our mind up, there are some of us who haven't made our mind up, but right now, as is, right, I'm a basketball guy, and I'm telling you, $1.5 million for basketball expansion is a bad idea on what to do with the CBA. Some of this stuff is going to have to be a good faith agreement, right? Like, we're going to have to say, "Listen, if you want to be a partner of the city of Philadelphia, giving out free tickets is what you're supposed to do." That ain't a CBA thing. If you want to be a good partner of the city of Philadelphia, expanding basketball and neighborhood initiatives, that's what you're supposed to do. I just got an invitation from the Tyrese Maxey Foundation that he's giving out 2,000 turkeys. These people do this stuff already. They do. We just honored Marcus Morris in city council earlier this year, not because of the basketball player he is, because of all of the philanthropy work that he does in the city of Philadelphia. We legit gave him a key to the city, because he does more than 99% of the NBA players who are from Philadelphia, and he comes back here and does this stuff on a consistent basis. So I think that if we're going to get to a space and a place where we're going to come to an agreement that we're all comfortable with, clearly, some council members are frustrated, more frustrated than others, but there has to be an appetite on the position of the admin to negotiate some of the positions that you've taken, so we could put us in a position where as though we all feel like this is comfortable, a good deal for the city, because I think you're hearing a lot of resistance. The last thing I'll say, Council President, and I'm listening to my colleagues, and this is all being recorded, I heard schools brought up a lot throughout the course of today's conversation, and we all know that we have a $7 billion tab as it relates to school facilities alone. So when we go into budget negotiations next year, and we all got our priorities, I'm hoping that, based on today's energy, that school facilities would be something that we'll be willing to sacrifice a little bit more for, because I don't hear school facilities or anything around buildings in this conversation right here. So when we come back into next year's negotiation, I hope a lot of us got this same energy, because in order to give real money for our buildings, we're going to have to give up some of our pet peeve projects, in order to put us in a position to address some of the issues with public education. So we're going to use that as a tool for negotiation, let's keep that same energy next year, when we on the floor begging, saying, "Nah, don't put money there, right? Put money here." Because there's a chance we might have to increase, which we went from 55% to 56%? We might got to go to 57% next year?
Well, let me just, let me just comment on what you said.
No, no, no. I just want to be clear, right?
And let me be clear-
We're talking public education, right? And if that's a real thing, and we're really going to use that as a part of our negotiations, which I'm 100% for, right, that's going to have to be, we're going to have to archive this moment, and I'm really talking to my colleagues more than anybody, we're going to have to archive this moment, and make sure that this is the same appetite we have next year in budget negotiations, because we're going to have a huge tab on our hands. So as the Chair of the Public, as the Chair of the Education Committee, I love the energy around this, but I got to make sure I put a pin in that, because I know it's on the horizon next year, working with the school district, and knowing what the plan is and in the direction we're going in.
Well, so Councilmember, you don't have to put a pin in it, because we're working on that now, and we're working alongside of you, and we're working with the school district.
Oh, I know. With all due respect, with all due respect, you know, I know, I'm in that conversation, I'm a part of that negotiation, and I'm also listening to issues related to the change in president, and that having an impact on things. So we know firsthand, next year, when we go to talk about public education and funding for public schools, it's going to be a huge fiscal deficit from the operating and the capital side. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we have that same energy next year. But please, as I close out, I'm sorry, Council President, please, I'm challenging the administration to be a little flexible with the CBA. You hear from Councilmember Young, you've heard from other council members, there's questions about SEPTA and a lot of other stuff, but we really need y'all to be open to negotiating, to a conversation around how this money is spent, and it needs to be done in a way where we're all a little more comfortable. Because I think right now, we're clearly communicating, we don't agree with all of the terms in here, and we're purposely not talking about y'all pet projects. We haven't touched them at all.
So, so I just want to state for the record, I can't dribble a basketball, but I know economics, and I know economic impact, and I know economic mobility, I understand that through and through, okay? You mentioned the Tyrese Maxey Foundation. Again, can't dribble a basketball, but I can tell you about Tyrese Maxey and his foundation, because they have partnered with and stood with the administration on some amazing projects.
I was with you at the court redoing, so I get it.
And as it relates to whether it's the City College for Municipal Employment, PHLTCB, or other investments that we're looking to make through the CBA, there's nothing pet or a project about that. And in fact, this, this council affirmed that in our One Philly Budget, in our One Philly Budget. So CCME is not a one-and-done or one-time investment, it's not just a good idea, it's not just a pet project, it is a policy that we stand on, as they say, we're going, talking about Tyrese Maxey and basketball, and, you know, we're standing on business, right? Like, this is our, this is our approach to standing on business when it comes to investing in these projects, that this council affirmed were good projects, not just pet projects, not just one-and-done projects that were good ideas, but systemic ideas that would move the needle in the right direction. I appreciated that affirmative vote earlier in the year, and I appreciate the support here, and absolutely, Councilmember Thomas, we will continue to speak with you, not just about school facilities, not just about public schools, charter schools, all the schools, because that's what we stand on.
So, Council President, let me just clarify, I'm not, I don't, I didn't mean to offend you when I said pet projects. What I'm saying is that these are initiatives that were created by Mayor Parker and her team, that we didn't have before, that we now have. So when I'm talking about some of the issues around, I mean, some of the projects, like extended day and year, that's a great thing. Yes, we voted for it, because we feel like it's a phenomenal idea, we're not touching it. I'm not suggesting touch that. When you talk about the City College for Municipal Employment, yes, that's a great thing. So when I say pet projects, I do not mean to offend, I should have used the term ideology or ideas that came directly from this admin, that didn't exist before you got here. All of those things are amazing, we're not touching them, I see where you're going, but I just think that there are things that are in the proposal that I'm asking you all to be a little more flexible about, in order to put us in a position to be able to offset concerns that Councilmember Young communicated, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Ma, Councilmember Gaudier. I mean, I'm listening to everything everyone's saying, and I do think that there's a way to solve some of this stuff, but I don't think it happens if the admin does not have an appetite to negotiate the current positions in the proposal that you've communicated to us. So I think what I'm asking for is just a little flexibility from the admin to put us in a position to negotiate some of the things that's been communicated today, in order to see if we can find a little more happy ground, right? Politics is about negotiations, a good deal is one where everybody walks away with something, but nobody got everything they want. So I'm asking you guys, like, you know, not to get everything you want, and see if it's possible for us to walk away with something. I don't know if that's possible. I'm just going by the temperature of the council members and looking at the Council President, I just don't think that this deal right here is the best deal for the city written as is. Thank you, Council President.
Point of clarification-
Madam Leader.
Thank you so much, Council President. I think, just help me out here for clarification regarding the CBA. Everyone keeps talking about the $50 million. Is it that, there's consternation relative to the amount, meaning is $50 million a cap? Or is the consternation within the sort of different concepts and things listed in the CBA, meaning all the different allocations? Meaning, are you all stating, and I want to get this on the record, are you all stating that $50 million is the cap on your end, meaning, we still have to do our own negotiation? So I don't subscribe to the fact that this is an endpoint. To me, this is the beginning point. But I'm trying to get clarification on what members are asking for relative to the CBA allocations that we have listed here, and the amounts, just for the record, from my own understanding.
Councilmember Thomas.
So, so thank you, colleague. I think that's a phenomenal question, and I would say, based on what I asked and what I've heard, I think that both are the acts. I think that we want to see if there's an appetite to go above the $50 million that has been proposed thus far, I've heard that from members, but I also think, and I've said myself, we want to see if there's an appetite to renegotiate some of the items that's in the current CBA as is. Again, I just think that there are some items in there that kind of should be good faith things, that kind of goes without saying, and those dollars could be reallocated to some of the other concerns that was communicated, whether it's housing, or business development, or support for Chinatown. I just think that we can, I think that there's an appetite for both.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. Thank you very, very much for the clarification, but I just want to state for the record and just ask the administration to affirm this one way or the other. As far as I know with the negotiation, the information as presented is a starting point, this is not an ending point, because now this process is in the council chambers, and we will have to go through this process and come up with the, this sort of the end goal of whatever it will be, one way or the other. But you all agree?
And we respect the process.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you very, very much.
Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to get some clarity, point of information, that when it comes to negotiating the CBA, right, if the CBA is between the city and the developers, like, I'm trying to figure out what role does council play in having a seat at the table with the developers to negotiate the CBA, right? That's, that's the clarification, I think, that we're looking for as a council, as a body.
Thank you, Member Young. And so as we go through this process, and I expect that this process will be, we will deliberate the CBA to be quite transparent, as well as the proposal as a whole, and then we'll have to come up with a compromise and give and take. That's what the legislative process takes, in order for this project to either move forward, to be quite frank, to all the stakeholders, or not to move forward. Because as mentioned, in order for it to get voted out of this body, everybody has to be comfortable on what they're going to be voting on, and it can be voted either up or down. So there's going to have to be flexibility on all sides, as relates to how we go through this process. At least that's how I always envisioned it, and that's just how the legislative process works. If that wasn't the case, there would be no need to even come on this side of the chairs.
Absolutely, Council President Johnson, absolutely, and we respect the process.
Okay. The Chair now recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. Good afternoon. I know I have a bunch of questions, so I'm going to just put them all at once, and some of my colleagues also have already alluded to some of the same questions. So, city council, we did not have input in the CBA, and I'm, maybe I'm speaking for myself, but I've had one meeting with the Sixers, two meetings with y'all, and both of the meetings with y'all, y'all spoke at me, gave me an opportunity to ask questions of a packet that was about this thing, and then we followed up. That's not a meeting, and that's not engagement. And I was wondering, like, what possibilities do we have in improving the CBA? And I'm glad you just said that it's a possibility. My next question is, knowing that, knowing from the reporting and inquiry, that the administration caved on the competing facilities clause, what additional items did the mayor ask for that the Sixers rejected in the CBA? How come the administration did not include labor neutrality agreement with the CBA? And the Seven Sixers owners previously delayed this several times, because I know they want to get it open for 2031. So given the discussion today, and I know I have so many more questions that have not been answered, will we be able to have a delay to weigh on this appropriately, or this is it?
Councilmember, I will, I think this is for me and Tiffany to split here. So with respect to the CBA, I think we've, was the question answered before through these conversations? It sounds like the consensus is it's now on the floor, and so, you know, I don't know if you need anything else around that-
That first one was kind of-
And you're talking about the allocation, right? Not necessarily the flow of funds.
Well, I think if we're negotiating, I thought, from my understanding of what was just said, that it's all up for negotiation in this legislative process, if I heard correctly to that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, do you need anything from me as to the legal structure of the CBA? I think it sounds like we're really talking about the allocation of funds here.
I think that we will have information about probably both. We'll kind of send it to you in an email and wait to hear something back.
Okay. And then with respect to the Most Favored Nation Clause, which we, which was reported in the newspaper as the mayor folding, which I reject that subversion of what happened. Did you have specific questions as to the competing facility?
Kind of just kind of what happened, like, our negotiation process up to this point is what we hear in the news-
Sure.
-is what we have to ask question on, which is unfair.
Sure.
And that's not fair negotiation for council, when all of us will be taking votes to jeopardize or increase our ability-
Yes.
-to be elected officials later on, based on, what's the quote that you said, Stephanie? I mean, Tiffany, "See what I say and see what I, whatever do." So I need to-
"Watch what I do."
"Watch what I do." So, but so far, and I've said this before, watching what I do-
Yeah.
-has had adverse effects on us.
Yep.
So I need to just, we just want to be a part of the process and have a clear understanding. So when things come out in the paper, how do we know if we weren't engaged in the process?
Yes. So with respect to the, what we call the competing facility provision, that is not a new concept that is popping up throughout the country and in different negotiations with arenas, because we have moved to the point where arenas are not being funded by public dollars anymore. And so, excuse me, the mayor was very clear that while she was going to allow the Sixers to protect their investment in part, that she was not going to tie her hands or any future mayor's hands, specifically with respect to what's going on in the sports district downtown. So the competing facility clause that we negotiated is actually very limited and narrow, and only involves direct funding, tax benefits, or the grant of land outside the sports arena. And it only, it is only that kind of investment in stadiums that are between five, stadiums or arenas between 5 and 25,000 seats. And I can give you a full briefing on that, it's actually, there were a lot of carve-outs, so it doesn't cover government facilities, it doesn't cover nonprofit facilities, it doesn't cover benefits that are already baked in the contract for the stadiums that we have downtown. It doesn't cover routine maintenance that the city is doing in that area. So it really, and I'll repeat, the mayor has said very publicly, it's dollar-for-dollar arena for an arena. So it's quite narrow. So again, I disagree with how it was portrayed in the newspaper. I think if we were going to negotiate it, we did it as narrowly as possible, but with respect to the Sixers, that they are putting $1.3 billion into this project without any public funding.
Thank you very much. Minority Leader, you okay?
One other question. So does the administration expect the Sixers to seek state and federal dollars for, to help subsidize this project?
Can you say that question again, please?
Are we expecting the Sixers to request state and federal dollars for this project?
I think that there is a possibility that they will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Minority Leader. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to follow the Vice Chair of the Housing Committee in asking some questions about housing. The city's own impact study states that although the arena won't be built on top of any housing in Chinatown or other neighborhoods, there is evidence that it could stimulate displacement indirectly. And, you know, on, you know, in your testimony, you also acknowledged that we know that Chinatown and Wash West are already gentrifying. The city solicitor will remember that when we were fighting to preserve the university city townhomes, for that one location, we secured $3.5 million in order to provide meaningful relocation assistance to the families who were living there, and then we worked together to secure another $14 million for the city to redevelop the site, and that was needed for 75 units. More recently, we saw PHA put $24 million up just to acquire Burt Shalom, right? And so, given those circumstances and the ongoing housing crisis in the city of Philadelphia, I'm very skeptical about the $3 million over three-year amount identified for housing, especially since we know that nearly 40% of the individuals in Chinatown and Washington Square West are considered cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened, meaning that they spend at least 30% of their income on their housing costs, and sometimes much more than 30%. So can you expound on how you arrived at the figure of $1 million per year over three years to support housing programs? Can you talk about what that money will be used for, more specifically than we've heard today? And, you know, can you also talk about renters? According to the impact study, 68.5% of the impact area is renter-occupied, a much higher proportion than the rest of the city. Can you describe the measures that you plan to take to stop the displacement of Chinatown- Can you describe the measures that you plan to take to stop the displacement of Chinatown residents who rent and may be gentrified out by rising rents?
Hi, Jesse Lawrence, Director of Planning and Development. So I'll defer to my colleagues to explain how they arrived at the item, the line item. But again, the seed investment, as we've been providing it as or portraying it as, is that it is in fact part of a larger contribution that will be mapped out. The housing plan is really important here because it will be much more comprehensive in understanding where all that funding will come from, how we will be able to, all the numbers you just kind of described, we're looking at not just the avenues to that type of funding, but we're looking at the partnerships that will be able to access those types of funding and collectively, comprehensively, strategically be able to provide the housing where the deficits exist the most right now.
So there are lots we don't know.
There is, again, we understand how important the housing plan is going to be in the interim. There's a, you know, spending schedule, when these numbers are supposed to come out, when the spending's supposed to come out of the CBA. But we, you know, we're not going to wait until that spending comes from the CBA. We're going to implement what we can now in the interim and be able to leverage that once that spending actually begins.
Council President, very quickly, just put on the record, does the administration have an opinion on the wisdom of pushing forward a plan that is identified in our own impact study as, you know, that there's proof that it would provide displacement without securing the necessary resources to stop the displacement?
Again, the housing plan will be able to identify where we can implement measures to not have displacement. Again, we're looking at Chinatown as a commitment specifically in that housing plan. We plan to leverage public opportunities, public, excuse me, public ownership opportunities to look at where we can provide that type of housing. But again, it will be a larger plan, it will be part of a larger plan that is going to serve as an interim tool and resource, again, until we are able to leverage those funds as they get spent down.
Does the administration have an opinion on standing behind a plan that might stimulate displacement while not having a plan to stop the displacement or the resources necessary to stop the displacement?
I think the point of, I'm sorry, John Monlag from the Department of Planning and Development, I think the point of the impact study was to identify what are the areas of concern. And I think it did that. And I think, you know, the criticism we got early on was, oh, this is just a, you know, it's paid for by the Sixers and it's just going to tell everybody what they want to hear. And it didn't do that. What it did was it identified vulnerabilities. But I think in doing so, because they did a very good job, I think, in identifying what are the possibilities, it gives us some place to aspire to try to impact or try to avoid some of these impacts. And so that is the idea behind the seed money. But the study, we need to do the study to understand exactly what does the community want? What are available assets that we can utilize to put into solutions for affordable housing beyond the 3 million? We are going to look at other funding that we are making available, that we are putting together right now, that could also layer on top of it. We also have many city programs that do target renters, and all of those need to be put into play. So it has to be an all-in solution where we're looking at everything, or it's not really going to be effective.
How much leverage do we think, do you think we'll have to secure those resources after we give the Sixers a yes? Do you think it'll be easy or hard?
I'm not expecting that they're coming from the Sixers.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas Overwart.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your testimony, you claim that the pilot agreement and UNO settlement from developers will likely exceed what the Sixers would owe in property taxes. But based on independent calculations from leading sports economists, your projections seriously undervalue the property value and resulting property taxes, which could be as much as $450 million over the next 30 years. On top of that, the Sixers estimated over 10,000 more construction jobs than the city's impact study estimated over the 30-year period. It seems to me that there is still serious debate around your projections of future tax revenues, redevelopment prospects, and jobs provided for the project. We'll be submitting a request in writing to receive all assumptions, all calculations, and justifications for your expected property valuation and property tax revenue. I want, we need to very clearly see how the administration is making the claim that the city will not be losing any money on this deal. While we wait for that math to be released, I want to be clear that the projections used to justify this project are bets essentially, not realities. And these bets are rooted in impact reports that are difficult to trust, as has been articulated already. I want to ask a few questions about the city commission the impact reports, and because the hour has drawn nigh and the hour far spent, I want to try to keep us on time. So a yes or no is fine. I don't mean that to be quick, but seriously, a yes or no would be sufficient. For the record, can you confirm that the city's economic impact analysis is based on the calculations of CSL?
Yes, it's based, it was done by an independent company called CSL.
Yes, CSL. Isn't it true that CSL is owned by Legends Hospitality Management, which is a co-venture of my least favorite organizations, Goldman Sachs, the Dallas Cowboys, and the New York Yankees?
They are a part of Legends, yes.
Isn't it true that Legends Hospitality Management also markets venue concessions and bids on concessions contracts at arenas and stadiums?
They do, but they were, but they did not on this, and they followed a methodology that we prescribed for them that was very limited in what it would count for the economic impact. So it would only count new events and would only account spending in the arena. So we took a direct hand in guiding them into what would be in their impact study. So this impact study is very different from impact studies that you'll see for other arenas.
Let me drop my point. Isn't it true that on at least one occasion CSL released a study in support of a stadium for which their parent company, Legends, was also bidding on concessions contract?
You sound like you know more about that than I do.
Wouldn't you say that their history of inflated projections and conflicts of interest make it tough for the public to trust CSL studies?
No. No, I do not believe that's true because of the way they did the study and because of the way we worked with them to ensure that it was a conservative study that was based only on what happened in the arena, that was based on direct spending, not induced multipliers, that didn't include in new additional impact based on what would happen with Sixers game, just on those new events.
Council President, I did hear the bell ring. Can I go ahead and round out my questions? Can you name a single example where CSL did not recommend building a stadium or an arena after conducting their detailed analysis?
We were not asking them to make a recommendation about whether to build or not to build. We were asking them to do an analysis of what the impact would be based on a set of conservative assumptions that we worked with them to develop.
I want to just draw this in conclusion. You know, as far as I can tell from the questions that I've asked and what I've heard, what I've heard responded to on, for some of our colleagues' questions, it still feels to me, as other folks have already lifted up, that you're asking us to trust billionaire bets over trusting our constituents, who are telling us actively and have been for some time that they do not want this arena, or at least they don't want it there. What I know is that there are realities, not bets, but real material problems facing each corner of our city. Some have already been named. I'm thinking about Councilmember Lazada. I know you have been raising the alarm of the housing crisis and need for good jobs for the neighbors in your district. Councilman Driscoll, who was here, he's kept his eyes focused, he kept our eyes focused on SEPTA and how much our public transit is struggling. Councilmembers Gaultier and Jones, who's no longer here with the UC Townhomes and Burt Shalom, has been lifted up. You have both been on the front lines of recent affordable housing fights, which are just the beginning of many more coming down the pike in light of all that's happening. Councilwoman Bass, you fought for funding for the many struggling parks and rec centers throughout the 8th District struggles, which are mirrored citywide. I hear you, Chief Thurmond, for speaking to that. But I know Council President Johnson, I know you've championed workers in your district who are desperate for a good deal with permanent, well-paid, union jobs. And almost every council manic district is facing a potential school closure over the next few weeks, as Councilman Thomas has kind of alluded to. In the best-case scenario, this arena plan does not address these real problems, not bets, but problems, realities that are facing our city right now. It does not provide more housing stability. It does not help SEPTA avoid its fiscal cliff. There are too many questions about who will benefit from the jobs it provides and how good those jobs will be. And it does not keep our schools open. And if history has taught us anything, we should expect something closer to the worst-case scenario than the overly ambitious projections per shared here today, as I think Councilman Young kind of alluded to. If that turns out to be the case, this arena plan makes all these problems worse, not better, by siphoning important tax revenue away from our most pressing real problems, by putting extra strain on a transit system already under immense strain, and by destroying one of our strongest and most resilient communities. Jesus said, "For who among you will go to build a tower and not sit it down to count the cost after having laid the foundation and then not able to finish it? The people looking around mock him and say they couldn't have built it." That's not to proselytize, it's to make the point that we are about to or are being asked to go forward with a project with all these unanswered questions, to be the crowning jewel on Market East and leaving so many people without feeling satisfied for what they're going to get in the process. And that is a recipe for mocking on the back end. It'd be pretty, and it'd also be a point, an eyesore for many who recognize how much they didn't get out of it. And so I would encourage us to really consider what other colleagues have said about at least negotiating, being open to reconsiderations around here. This is a major issue to me, and as it stands right now, there are a lot of questions yet to be answered. Thank you, Council President, for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Rue Landau.
Yes, answering.
The chair recognizes Chief of Staff to the mayor, it's Tiffany Thurman.
So Council President Johnson, as someone that is, and I agree with you, this is not the stage to proselytize, but in keeping with the parable that the council member mentioned around Jesus and the parable of the tower and counting the cost, I'd like to talk about the cost that we counted through our economic impact process. And so if I may, just less than 60 seconds, our PIDC representative here, Sam Rose, will talk about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Sam Rose, again from PIDC. I want to emphasize with respect to CSL that they responded to a request for proposals we got. We got a very strong response nationally and chose CSL as the best out of that group. So we are very pleased with CSL and worked very carefully with them in terms of these conservative assumptions. So I just want to come back for the record again in terms of this notion of inflated or other costs. We did not do the things that people do and studies do with respect to these. In every single respect, we took it back a notch and made it more conservative. We did not use multipliers. We did not use induced effect. We did not use indirect impacts. These are very directly related to just the net new events. CSL helped us think about the single arena versus a double, two-arena scenario, and again, pared it back to just what we thought was net new dollars.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you. Quick comment, and then two areas of questions. One, EOP, and the other is about office space. So the comment is that I just wanted to put on the record my thought that, yes, we need to do both of shuffling money around in the $50 million negotiated, city-negotiated CBA so that places, things like free tickets to students gets moved to things like affordable housing and SEPTA. And we also need to ask for more, much, much more, because the city is in much need. So I'll start with the office space because I think it's easier, but when we saw the renderings of East Market Street, there was a discussion of adding more buildings for office space. And we recall having a discussion that even the Litz Center building is 50% vacant right now. But the potential, we have a potential of the parking lot space at 13th and Market being created into new building for office spaces. What analysis have we done? What is the office vacancy rate on that, citywide, and on that side of Market Street? And why do we believe that people will be filling these offices, spaces up?
Jesse Lawrence, Director of Planning and Development. Just to be clear, the illustrative plan that did show all the potential along the corridor, you're absolutely right that it did demarcate 1301 Market Street being a potential office development. I did also in presenting that flag that it was a dated proposal. The purpose of the exercise was to just identify where certain plans had been prepared along the corridor. But to your point earlier, we did present where certain office development had been, again, past, present, and future. The future aspect of that illustrative plan didn't necessarily demonstrate a lot of proposed office growth. What we did show was a lot of office space being converted to residential uses. So I think that kind of answers your question as far as what the approach is, is, you know, we're setting up, again, if any master planning process, if we're going to guide where we are going, we want to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, office development and office occupancy is downward at this point. The general occupancy is about 75% throughout the city. The quarter that you see along, that quarter that would be vacant is also the quarter that you see in the, in the Market East submarket. That vacancy rate is actually even higher as you get into Old City. But we want to be clear about the fact that we, you know, in any master planning process, we want to make sure that we're responding to trends. And the trend right now is that office absorption is negative right now. So whatever we do, again, holistic and strategic, it's not going to be presenting options for things that won't necessarily be absorbed in a way that other uses might be. But we want to be clear about the fact that whatever direction we're going is going to be a diversification of uses. It'll be mixed. It will probably ebb away from office space. You know, those same properties that you were talking about, the Litz Building, the Macy's Building, we understand that half that Litz Building is subleased right now. We also understand that Macy's is also considering some sort of residential conversion. But I think that whatever we do, the master planning will set a, it'll set the pace for whatever we want to bound ourselves to doing. And again, if we find that market trends are allowing for office development, we respond accordingly. But if that's not the case, we won't let it go.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in real quick with my EOP questions. I'll rattle them off. The first one is that you listed the entities that you went to to inform your thoughts on diversity, for your diversity numbers, including office economic opportunity and whatnot. What data did they have that you relied on? And I hearken back to when I started at the city with the mayor's diversities in the construction trades group, knowing that thankfully the unions are working very hard now to diversify, but we've had an uphill battle with this. The second question is, we were promised in the meeting that there wouldn't be double dipping, double counting, that an African-American female would be counted as both black and female. And I don't know where that is in the document. I would love to see that. And then the third question is that I know that the Sixers have negotiated with one large service union and are not fully committed to another, which is concerning to me. And so, one, absolutely want all union workers there at the Sixers Arena. But in the meantime, I did see a notification, I saw in the documents what we call for the city, I believe we have a minimum wage, a living wage, and a prevailing wage. And the minimum wage I saw in the document was in the lease, $15 an hour plus a certain amount for inflation after July of 2023. I think that's a bit low. I'd like that to be higher. And, but when the TIF is going to be removed from, so there's a TIF that covers about three blocks and three sections, and it'll be removed from the one section the arena will be on, will it still, will that section still abide by the obligation of a living wage when it is removed from the TIF?
Thank you. Nicole Stokes, an attorney from the Law Department. And so I believe your first question was regarding data relied upon. As you may know, the city does an annual disparity study every year. That is a report that, and a study that OEO is very familiar with. It looks at availability and utilization within the field by NEX code, and that's broken down by different industry. And so that is a report that OEO relies upon a lot in order when we set goals and ranges on city contracting in the industry as well. I know your second question regarded to making sure that there is no double counting. That would be Section 3 of the diversity goals. It says to maximize opportunities for as many businesses as possible, a firm that is certified and two- A firm that is certified in two or more categories will only be credited toward one participation range as either an MBE, WBE, or DSBE for any specific contract. And so that is incorporated into the EOP. And I believe I'll turn to Renee.
And I don't know if you said the page number, Nicole, but that's the bottom of Page 3, what that language is. If I understand your question on the TIF correctly, you are concerned about the two-thirds that remain?
No, the one-third that will no longer make it, ensuring that the one-third that's no longer in the TIF will pay at the minimum the living wage?
Yes.
Even though it's not obligated to do so any longer? Isn't there a living wage associated with the TIF? And one-third is being removed from the TIF? And my concern is that...
So the third that's removed to the TIF will be governed by the terms of this deal. 21st Century Minimum Wage covers everybody, and prevailing wage will cover the arena business services personnel.
Only when their union, prevailing wage?
The 21st Century Minimum Wage applies to 76 DevCo and their subcontractors, including the master concessionaire and their professional services providers. Prevailing wage applies to building services employees. The reduced TIF district remains subject to all initial obligations, including living wage requirements. So the 21st Century Wage applies to the arena.
Okay, thank you. And the prevailing wage has all the different, there's a whole paragraph with all the different jobs that are subsumed within that category.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Council President, is one of the questions that I asked, I think I didn't get answered, and it's about...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
All right. One of my questions, I don't think, was answered, and is, why didn't the administration include a labor neutrality agreement in the CBA?
So we will, we will provide a response to the Council President's office in writing this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good question. Councilmember Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions are along the same lines regarding the EOP. Is the EOP incorporated in the development agreement? I think that's important, because we want to ensure that the city, the developer, and the contractors, right, are all aligned with the same goals that we have in mind. So is it, so again, is the EOP incorporated with any development agreement? Or is the EOP, to frame it a little differently, is the EOP incorporated into the other agreements, the lease, the sublease, by reference or exhibit or anything like that, to make it a part of the actual contracts between the city, the developers, and their contractors?
So we got lawyers on council, so you get back to deep dive-type questions.
Speak my way. Yes. It will be an exhibit to the sublease. It's also in the term sheet. The EOP and the CBA are all referenced in the foundational documents.
Thank you. It's the only question, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Cartier.
Thank you, Council President. We've all been here all day, but we've talked about several aspects of community benefit that, for which there's no answer for, or for which there's not enough, right? We talked about the SEPTA piece. I heard conflicting statements on the Sixers covering the construction, but they're not on the hook for the operating. And then I heard members of the admin say they're on the hook for everything. But none of that is specified in writing or in this legislative package. Additionally, we've talked about things like having 1.6 million, I believe, kind of allocated for business disruption, and many members commented that that wouldn't be enough, given what they've seen from big projects like these in the past. We also talked a good amount about housing, $3 million over three years for affordable housing in areas that not only are gentrifying now, but for which our own impact study says gentrification and displacement could increase, given this project. Given that the current CBA, which we're calling a Community Benefits Agreement, doesn't speak to a lot of this stuff, I have questions still about the timing and the sequencing of the master planning process. I would think that in a normal situation, with a project of this scale, where we've looked at some of the unintended negative impacts, that the administration would be presenting us with a master plan for revitalizing Market East, a master plan for not just protecting Chinatown, but growing Chinatown. However, the administration has been clear that you want to present a plan after the arena has been moved forward. If we are really prioritizing Chinatown as a cultural asset and a valued neighborhood in the city, why are we doing this backwards? Can you just expound on that more?
Well, one, we're not doing it backwards. And then, of course, we'll answer the question again.
Why are we, sorry, let me be, let me be clearer. Why would we worry about master planning after we move forward an enormous project, which our own impact study shows could have negative consequences? Can you speak to the sequencing and why that is wise and prudent?
Happy to.
John Monlock from the Department of Planning and Development. Again, the impacts, if the arena were to go forward, won't begin until 2026 at the earliest. That's when they're proposing as the earliest demolition date construction in 2028. We have plenty of time to engage with the community, gather as much information as we can, formulate a plan, figure out how is the best way that we can serve the community, the affordable housing needs, affordable commercial needs, and engage with something that predates the initial demolition and activity that happens on the site.
So is the administration's position that you worry about that type of stuff after you say yes to the project?
We're worried about it right now. I mean, we're already starting.
So what are we doing about it? Or where is that enumerated or detailed?
Right now, we are, we are starting the planning process within the Department of Planning and Development. So we're putting together, what is our, what is our game plan? What is the cost that's going to be associated? How do we pull in the other work that's already been done? How do we piggyback on what's already happening under the stitch and the outreach that's happening and the planning efforts that are going there to try to just formulate a plan? How are we going to pull this off? How do we get started? What are the timelines? What are the deliverables? That's all starting right now.
So it will, do you think this is like an ongoing sort of way of operating? We'll kind of just approve huge things and worry about a plan or having the resources to stop displacement like afterwards? Is that just like an arena philosophy? Or is that a philosophy to planning in the city of Philadelphia in general?
So we do master planning processes, all process, all across the city. We know that, right? From Chinatown to neighborhood, your neighborhood, right? The district that you represent. So whether we're talking about this deal or other deals, as John Monlock said, this is a part of our overall process, whether, regardless of what type of development is happening on Market East. So, and with regards to the impact analysis, the master plan is actually in response to the ongoing engagement that we've done. John, do you have anything else to add there?
I think that's part of it. So it's baked into this, we have a bunch of benefits that are in the CBA that are intended to drop into place. Now, that money doesn't necessarily hit until the Sixers sign a document, agree to do this project. And if they don't, then we're dealing with a whole different set of circumstances. We're dealing with the natural trend of what's happening right now, with gentrification that Chinatown is experiencing. But it's going to be very different than an arena. And so until we know that the Sixers are actually going to go forward, that they commit to this and drop them the money, then we know what we're planning for. We don't know right now, because if they don't, then we're not planning for an arena. We're planning for something else. And it may be some other proposal that comes down the pike. We don't have any right now, but hopefully, there is another option at some point. Somebody wants to invest their money into Market East. And then we need to take that into consideration when we do our planning.
To be clear, just to respond to the comment about neighborhood planning, which I think is very important, as an urban planner, with two urban planners in my office, I've not seen kind of so much expected to come after the fact. The plan doesn't come after the project. The project comes after the plan, right? And we should not be, you know, the only legislation I've seen come out to protect the cultural integrity of Chinatown came from Councilmember Squilla. I would have expected that to come from the administration and the Sixers, or at least some of it. The Sixers should not be planning our city. We should be planning our city.
And I want to be very clear. We were, we were very, we're very happy to sit with any member of council, including Councilmember Squilla. But the, but what we came out with shows not just our commitment to Chinatown, but also our citywide commitment, even beyond the CBA. And if I may, I'll ask Sophie Bryan to come up and talk about that Chinatown commitment beyond the CBA.
So Councilmember, consider me, sorry, Sophie Bryan, the voice of the expertise of a lot of colleagues here. So in thinking about this Chinatown commitment, I think what we're trying to sort of frame out for council's consideration is both those CBA funds as sort of an initial leverage and a boost, but also all the other things the city can do and should do to respond to conditions in Chinatown. So I know I'm going to get a chused of like filibustering here, but let me just run through a couple of different categories just to talk about it. So sort of starting with the community vitality and cultural preservation, here, the master planning is critical to that, right? As you know, from your city planning expertise. But I think the zoning, sort of even in advance of Councilmember Squilla introducing the zoning overlay, the administration was already in conversation about, like, what are the zoning interventions that might help preserve the community? And that relates to sort of like uses, permitted uses, not permitted uses, density. Also, there's a commitment to support a city-run recreation space for Chinatown and cultural center. So again, just two specific examples of things that we've heard directly from the community that are important to the community. We understand that there aren't existing those facilities there. That might tie to how the Chinatown Stitch overlay gets programmed. And just talk a little bit about traffic and parking. We know in multiple meetings with Chinatown stakeholders, particularly for small business owners, concerns about parking are existential, and they're already existential, right? Because we know, and it's reinforced by the Community Impact Study, it's a super car-dependent community, small business community. Lots of folks who shop and engage in commerce in Chinatown are driving in. So, and Mike can speak with more specificity about this. Sorry, Mike Carroll can speak with more specificity. But we obviously have to sort of do an audit and some planning of what are the existing parking spaces? Is there a parking validation opportunity to help people who are coming in, not for arena events, but to patronize Chinatown small businesses, have access to the parking? I've also heard Mike talk, I think, in some of the council briefings about working with PTPA to really control and rein in the on-street parking hours. So we can't, we don't have folks who are going to Disney on Ice, for instance, using that precious on-street parking. Instead, we're hopefully driving them to using transit to get to those events. Sort of one more area on sort of clean and green. Another area that we know is really important for Chinatown community, whether or not, right, whether or not an arena gets constructed. So they are thinking about, how do we leverage existing programs like PHL Taking Care of Business and sort of further build out, and this again comes up in Councilmember Squilla's Arena Services District, ways to make sure that the neighborhood is clean, is beautiful, so on and so forth. So I, sorry, too many words too quickly, but the broad concept is, take some of those targeted investments that are in the CBA and use those to help spur a broader conversation about how can the city be supportive of this community based on the conditions that are already existing?
Okay. So we should give the Sixers a commitment, but we'll have a conversation about displacement in Chinatown? I just want to be clear.
That's not what we said.
Okay.
Just for the record, that's not what we said.
I heard we were spurring a conversation about the potential displacement and how we could manage it. But thank you, Council President, I'm done.
You're welcome. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau for the last question, and then we'll be preparing for recessing until tomorrow morning.
My final question is, because there's so many question marks and unanswered financial questions, is there ever a point where the city would back out of this saying, clearly, this cannot go through fiscally in a responsible, reliable way?
We came to this agreement not lightly. We came to this agreement based on a robust analysis, economic impact study, doing learning journeys, looking at other cities, what we could learn from those cities. We looked at the CBA and beyond the CBA. We looked at our Economic Opportunity Plan. We did not come to this decision lightly, but now we stand on it. This is a decision. This is a plan. This is a, a package that we, that we stand behind and that we believe in. And so on behalf of Mayor Parker and the Parker administration, the promise is the promise.
At this moment, not, I wasn't asking until now. I'm talking about, we're being asked to say yes now and plan later. So what happens if something goes terribly wrong six months from now, eight months from now? Is there ever a moment where the city says, wait a second, we're out of this? We're stepped back?
Go over to our city solicitor.
There are certainly contingencies built in. Say, there's certainly, you know, say we can't get through zoning, things like that. But if the 76ers, you know, file for bankruptcy, or there's, you know, investments that we can't make and fulfill on the city side, there are escape clauses in the sublease. Of course, we hope that it doesn't come to that and that there is not a catastrophe. And we're going to be optimistic that there isn't one. But there is, there are certainly clauses for both parties if completion of the deal is not realistic.
You finished, Member Landa? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your time today. We'll see you tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. This concludes the Business Before the Committee of the Hold for today. I recognize Councilmember Squilla for a motion to recess the public hearing on Wednesday, November 13, 2024, at 11:00 a.m.
So moved, Council President.
Is there a second? It has a moving property segment that the Committee of the Hold will be recessed to Wednesday, November 13, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. This hearing is recessed.